This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's city council meeting, November 20th, 2023. If you could all join us and stand to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no return, justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. If we could get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Strowman?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Engel?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan?
Here.
Mayor Bellinger?
Here.
Thank you. First up on our agenda tonight is the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or member of the public for special consideration. Is there anything here at the council level that we would need to pull for further comment or questions? Anybody here in the audience in the chambers that might have anything on the consent calendar looking to discuss?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a motion?
I'd second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carry his five-oh. Next up, item four, our staff communications. Who's up first tonight for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have our reports from all the departments. We have the treasurer's report, the police department report, recreation, development services, public works, building department, water department, wastewater treatment plant report, and our quarterly SJ cog citizens advisory committee report. And then if you have any questions on those, please let me know. Animal control was not included on this item. It wasn't ready at the time, so that will be put on the next agenda as an off item. Any questions on any of those reports?
Have any? Anybody else? I think we're good. So anything special standing out by anybody?
I have a comment for Chief. I brought this up while you were out on leave, but just want to really thank the department for the level of detail on the reports with the case number so that we can follow it. It's very detailed, very well thought out, and provides really a good snapshot for our residents. So thanks for updating the format of the report.
Wrong.
Then I'll go into each of the departments. Jalen, do you have any updates for your department?
Yes, thank you, Dominique. Four items today. It'll be quick. We continue to work on the First Street area parking issue. We did make a Facebook post recently to notify the public. There is public parking in the merchant yard development, and we will are planning on putting some signage around that area to notify the public where that is exactly. We continue to look at solutions to identify potential areas for increased parking in that area. We have some identified solutions, and we're just verifying those now with staff. We will present or share with the council in some manner and then start talking with the businesses if they're viable solutions. Wanted to share with council, there's new state law, AB 2234, which basically is encouraging cities to streamline post entitlement approvals. So building permits, grading permits, those types of things after the kind of planning approval. In the states, you know, real encouragement to see development, but residential development in particular. So not too much impact immediately, but wanted to let you know, really starting first of the year, city needs to make applications and checklists available for, you know, developers and others so they know what's happening after entitlement, so after planning approvals. There are time limits set for the cities. We need to establish a right to appeal process, again, for the post entitlement things. And then the biggest one, but not until 2028, is the city needs to implement an online permitting system. Now, we can ask for a reprieve if the implementation of the online system were to increase building permit fees. So we could ask for some years past the 2028 deadline if we need to. But I wanted to share with council as soon as we were aware about AB 2234. Two other issues. The public review draft of the draft housing element is out. It was released November 15th. It'll close on December 14th. It's a 30-day review. We will hold a public workshop on December 4th. That'll be both here in person and virtual option for those who are interested in commenting on the draft document. After that 30-day review period expires, staff and the consultants will take at least 10 days to make those changes that we heard from the public and then submit the document to HCD to start their review of the document. And then just a quick note, wanted to share even more updated than the report. We continue to track how our business license reviews are going. We set a goal for three days. We've hit, we've had 30 come in since that time, September 1st, and we have missed the mark three times. So 90% success rate on the goal. The others were four or five days just past the goal. So just wanted to share how we've been tracking against that goal. And that's all for me today.
Yes, I just want to update you guys with the mayor, with the three new officers that just were introduced last time. They're all jumping into the training. They're all coming out, and it's working out real good. In December, I expect to add one more if things go right. It'd be another female, our office specialist, went through the academy, graduated in October 31st from the Delta Academy. So we're just waiting for a few other tests to finish up, and then she'll probably start sometime in December.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I have a few also. Update on Caltrans. As you can see, they're, in my opinion, about 95% done. They've got the striping all put down. It actually went fairly well, other than them working on one of the holiday weekends, which wasn't nice, but they kind of heard about that. There is a little bit of corrections they still need to do on the asphalt that I'm working with them, and the communication's going well, but did want to give you some info on that. Also, December 9th of this year is the last flag football game. Most likely a week or so after that, the rest of the month of December and January, we are going to be shutting the sports fields down in order to do some reseeding, some fertilization, and just the lawn needs some work with some feet off of it. And we feel like it's a good opportunity without sports going on at that time. Maybe not the best weather time, but we can work around that. But if people are asking why the fields are shut down, that is the reason. We'll have them open just as soon as we can, by February 1st at the latest.
When is our next sports season start up?
It's baseball, and Jen, you can call that March-ish.
March, okay.
Yeah. But I want to try to get over February 1st, as I know, being a coach myself, that practice time's important. So we want to try to get them out there as quick as we can.
Justin, is that just at the big park, or are we doing, looking at that for all parks?
At the time right now, we're going to be just doing Hogan. We're going to be trying to different, couple of different procedures that we haven't done before. S L A worked, and then, yeah, we can implement those into the other parks as needed.
Also, this, you know, Christmas on Maine is coming up on December 2nd. Public Works and myself is lucky enough to be the grand marshal, so hope to see a bunch of you guys out there rooting us on. That'll be fun event for us. Also, one small little change. Christmas tree lighting is next Tuesday, November 27th on Maine. Every year, we have a group of folks that go out and get us a Christmas tree for Christmas on Maine, but it's getting harder and harder for them to do that because the limitations of the trees, some of the farms are shutting down. The tree they were able to get this year is not as probably tall as me, maybe a little taller. So we made a decision, and we are going to be purchasing. We purchased today an aptos blue redwood, and I think it'd be a great idea if we planted a tree there that can kind of just grow through the years. We can see it grow high. It could be something that's permanent there. So if you see a tree that's not quite as big, hopefully this one's about 15, 20 feet high, but it's the right type of tree. Roots will grow down. The tree will grow up, and we're hoping it's there for years to come. We just want to let you know about that as well. And I think that's all I have for the evening.
Thank you.
A few updates, just to add on to Justin's comments about the tree lighting ceremony. I just want to make sure that the date's correct. It's Tuesday, which is November 28th, just to make sure.
Oh, it's not 27th, I apologize.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure the date was correct because that's what's on our website and our newsletter. And it starts at 5:30. And that's through the hospice of San Joaquin. So they host it, and then both the city and the Chamber of Commerce support and help and sponsor with that event. So we'll all be there. And then updates regarding the audit. Working with the auditor, I'm moving that forward. They're still trying to reconcile some items on their end. Andy and I are both pushing to get that done, and we're trying to get it on the closest meeting that we can get it on. And so I'm hoping that it'll be on the next meeting. I'm hoping at this point to get it done by the end of the year. But we're kind of in a position where we don't have any pool per se. And so we're working with them to not create a bad situation so that we can get that product and move on. And so we're working on that. I do have an update regarding the SSJID project. Currently, items that will need to be done before they move into the final design is going to be that property acquisition we've talked to before where they put the flow control facility. We have some SEQA concurrence and comments on a screen check. And then items that will need to move forward would include connection fee and delivery costs, which I've put a request in with SSJID for that, those items. And so they're supposed to be getting those back to me soon. And then we'll also need to make a water plan, a water master plan update, as well as a rate study. And so there's quite a few items that will need to be done before the project moves into final design, which is in line with the current timeline, which doesn't have it out to construction until, I believe, 2026. And so it's not running behind, but it's not, it's not ahead of schedule either. And so in that time period, we're going to be looking for alternative funding sources, grant funding, those type of items, and see if we can get something moving in the meanwhile. And then, let's see here.
Can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sure.
It might be better to ask Public Works, but do you know how deep our water level is right now?
Yeah, I mean, like I've got it. My belief is around 88, yeah, 88 feet currently.
And are, how deep are our wells currently?
Well, they all, I mean, they all vary.
I guess what I mean is we're not in any, you know, critical spot right now water-wise?
No, not at all. We've still got plenty of water down with the straw.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this project is an alternative source. It's not being required at this time, but it is moving forward in the aspect that the state has made it clear in past years that they want to see other cities, they want to see water districts and such move on to surface water, or at least have an alternative source. They've also been increasing or decreasing, depending on the words you use, the level of contaminants you have in the water, like arsenic and nitrates and such. And so we do want to be in the position to be able to prepare for that. However, at this point in time, there is no legislation forcing us to do it right now.
Do you think that there's some pretty viable options grants-wise, or?
I do. Water is a big thing for the state. I did see that the, it's changed since last winter because we got so much rain, where water was really, really at the top of the level you were hearing about it all the time. And it seemed like after that one year of all of that rain, it kind of dropped off as, you know, and housing's kind of been the one that's been focused on the most. But it's going to continue to be an issue because we're going to run back into those dry years and, you know, continue to have water constraints and issues. And so, but yeah, we're not, we're not in a hurry, you know, where we're going to be penalized in any way, shape, or form for not, not doing this project. And so it's okay to look into alternative sources and try to find other funding.
Thank you.
The water table, just real quick, is shared with surrounding cities because it's not like our water. So the fact that Riverbank's growing like a weed, if you will, and demanding more water, that's draining water. That's, we're in the same table, correct? Are we in the same table as the surrounding in the greater valley?
We are, but we're more, our concern more is agriculture around us than surrounding cities.
Okay.
But the aquifer that we pool from is identified by the state of California as overdrafted. And so that's what puts us in, into the area of concern, is we're an overdrafted basin.
That being said, are we still in an overdraft situation, given the sheer amount of water that we had last winter?
I'm not absolutely sure. Maybe we're not at this moment, but I'm sure we will be soon. And that's probably what they would hold their hat on, I believe. But I could, I could find out if we are or not.
Are we still in a drought?
There's two different answers. The state will tell you, the state will tell you yes. Your Public Works Department will tell you no.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the honesty.
And then we did have another agenda item, request item, that we had originally had prepared to put on the agenda for tonight, but that person was unable to make the meeting. And so that item's been pushed to the next meeting. And that was the request regarding adding mandates about agendas from Cody Fowler. And so we'll have that on the next meeting, which is December 4th. And then just going into the future scheduling, for the month of December, our meetings are going to be on the 4th and 18th. And so both of those days are not really moving into holidays. And so we'll have both of those meetings unless otherwise noted. But that the first meeting in January does fall on New Year's Day. And so that meeting would either need to be moved to the following day or canceled. And we typically do blackout for the first meeting in January. So if there aren't any pending items, we would love to be doing that as staff and then bring everything to you in that second meeting in January. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
That's it. Thank you very much. All right. Next up are matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. And with that, we'll open it up here to matters presented from the audience. Anybody here that would like to come to the podium and speak on anything not on the agenda?
Hello, my name is Peggy Rocha. I'd like to publicly thank Justin and the Public Works team. They're always so good about helping the Escalon Senior Fun Bunch. We have our events once a month, and so we try not to be too needy. But this past Wednesday, we did have to call twice, first for the heat, you know, the seniors. We thought were going to be too cold that day, and so they came right out, even though Justin said they were in a big hole and they were kind of busy, but someone came out right away and turned the heat up for us. And then we also had a problem with the microphone, and they came very promptly. So we really appreciate that because we know you guys were really, really busy that day.
Thank you.
And also, since I'm up here about the Fun Bunch, I had hoped that Anne Shaddix was going to be here tonight because I wanted to publicly congratulate her on her recent appointment. I don't know if the council knows, but she was recently appointed by the County Board of Supervisors as, to the Committee on Aging for the county. And so she will be that commissioner at large, and will be reporting back to us. So I wanted to congratulate her and also make the council aware of that. So, and thanks again for the tree. I think that's a great idea about having a permanent tree in the park, just like all the Hallmark movies, you know, we could be there for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Justin. We had a problem with out on Brendan again. They did one-third beautifully, and for three weeks, never came back to finish it. Called Justin, he got right on him, and they got out there. And then with the tree, my thing is, is that park still going to have the handicap walkway through it? If it is, maybe it should be coordinated with the tree once that's done, so you don't put the tree where they're going to dig it up and put in the walkway.
Yes, good advice. Thank you, committee.
So, not if that's still going. That might be a thought. Could do it at the end of it, you know?
Right.
Anybody else?
I could go for another thank you if anybody's up.
That's just looking greedy there, Mr. Collins. All right, if there are no more, we'll go ahead and close matters presented from the audience and move on to administrative matters. Number five, a three-year agreement on the poet program. Who's got that one? Mr. French, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. So the item before you, couple of action items we'll talk about, but it's accepting a three-year, $15,000 grant from the San Joaquin Community Foundation. It would be to authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement, which would include the scope of what staff and the council expect of this program that we would develop. So we're not developing the program here. We're getting direction to do so. And then determine the approach to which we identify the city's poet laureate if this were to be approved. So either a selection committee or an open call for poet laureates. So those are the action items. Stanislas, or excuse me, San Joaquin Community Foundation approached the city about trying to start a poet laureate program in the city of Escalon, as they have done in five other cities to date in San Joaquin County. Their goal is really to create this program in each of the cities within the county. And the intent of the program is to promote literacy, to, you know, sort of develop lifelong appreciation for poetry and literature. The San Joaquin Community Foundation is a philanthropic group who really seeks, has donors, and puts them together with causes or programs or projects. And they help to, you know, bolster and support nonprofits. And again, one of the things they want to do through this program is to encourage and really broaden the appreciation of literacy. So that is the intent here. They are offering a $15,000 grant, again, for a three-year period. And that grant primarily would be used as some sort of stipend for any poet that the city were to select poet laureate, that the city were to select, and seed money for the programs that this program or the poet laureate would, would create. So if provided direction, we would work with the San Joaquin Community Foundation to develop a program, looking at other programs, again, based on the direction from the council, bring that back with an executed agreement, and then that would be approved by this council, and then ultimately the San Joaquin Community Foundation Board. That's all from the staff level. I know we are joined by Moses Zapien, the CEO of the San Joaquin Community Foundation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council or the public may have on this program.
I had a quick question. How new or how old is this program as far as the other cities that have started it? Has it been going on for a few years in other cities in our county, or is this fairly new for everybody?
I'll defer to Moses, but it's been going on for several years, in some cases, in some cities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Moses Zapien, CEO of the San Joaquin Community Foundation. In response to your question, we established the Lodi poet laureate in about 2021, 2022.
Did Stockton have one prior to that?
Stockton was, I believe, is the first city to ever have a poet laureate, and that was established in approximately 2013 or 2014.
While we've got you at the podium, can you kind of break down the program for us and how it's worked in the other cities?
Absolutely. So we envisioned this program to serve as an investment in the human capital of every city in San Joaquin County to develop and advocate for literacy and for the love of learning and reading. We believe that it's important to be able to advocate for literacy in San Joaquin County. It's an important cause that we champion at the Library and Literacy Foundation and the San Joaquin Community Foundation. The most recent city that has appointed a city poet laureate has been Lodi. And for all intents and purposes, would I have been able to read the newspaper coverage, it's been, the program has fared very well. Indeed, the poet laureate was featured in, on the cover of Her Life magazine recently, this month, so you can all look at that as well. And happy to answer any specific questions that you may have related to the program.
Quick question maybe for both of you. Our program then would be basically based on what's already been developed. Is that correct?
We envision the program however you all in your community want to express it. That is to say, we have provided some examples based on other cities and how they've tailored the program to their community's needs, but it is very flexible to your community however you desire.
So when it comes to like teaching specific books and that kind of stuff, who has oversight on that? Like, is that, because obviously, reading is, I don't think too many people would disagree that reading's important, but it depends on what we're reading. So who actually has oversight on that kind of stuff?
I would divert to the city, but we don't necessarily mandate that the city poet laureate advocate any particular type of reading or book. But I'd defer to Mr. French.
You know, and I will read the kind of six options that other cities have adopted and which the SCS, I'll just call it SCF, have offered for the other cities. And then I'll touch on that question a little bit further. So the first one is composing one poem per year dedicated to the city of Escalon, and reading at a city council meeting or city event. So it's, you know, a drafting of a poem and then reading at an event. Partnering with the Escalon Library to host teen events such as spoken word events, poetry slams, or book clubs. That kind of touches on what you're talking about. Holding literacy events with the Escalon Unified School District and Escalon Area Schools. Hosting early childhood events with the Escalon Unified School District and Escalon Area Schools. Providing free poetry workshop to the general public in coordination with the school district or library, and then hosting public readings of original poetry. So to your, to your question on who has oversight of the books, the city council would ultimately select this individual, the poet laureate, and could have discretion on, you know, how they were performing, and, you know, could remove them from that position if so chosen. But staff would work, I envision, staff would work in close coordination with this individual if they were to do one of these six items or any other item. So they would, I envision, check in with us, and there would be some level of approval.
So if I understand the city council correctly, the city council would have basically overriding decision-making on, I mean, obviously, it says the Unified School District's involved. Obviously, they'd put their input in. Escalon Library would put their input in. But what you're saying is, it would defer to us for final, I guess, approval of the draft, so to speak, as far as what is actually being taught?
I think we have flexibility to implement it that way. I could envision other cities giving free license to this person. So I think we have flexibility anywhere in between.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here. Can I ask a couple of questions? So what other cities besides Stockton and Lodi?
Currently, the city of Ripon will be considering their poet laureate in December. The city of Tracey will also be considering their poet laureate in December as well.
And are there any rules, official rules, on how that $5,000 grant is spent?
No, we provide great flexibility in how your community and how your city council desires to use that money.
If it's not all used, do we have to give it back?
Not unless you cannot use it for another purpose.
Right.
That's the only qualification. As long as you use it for the purpose it was intended to, whether it be to provide a stipend to cover administrative costs, that would all be allowed. whether it be to provide a stipend to cover administrative costs, that would all be allowed.
Just thinking that this is an opportunity where we could take our summer reading program and just explode it, working with the school district and the library, and, I mean, you know, before you know it, everybody's reading.
I think that would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the.
I see no downside to this program whatsoever. I think it's good in all every which way. Just kind of line up what we want to do as a community and what's, whether we choose all these options or a few of them. Either way, start it off first year, add to it the second, third year, and build upon it. I think we have lots of options there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the three-year grant from the San Joaquin Community Foundation to establish a poet laureate program in the city of Escalon.
All right, we have a motion. I'm gonna put a pause on that for just one second and ask the public if, out here in the chambers, if they had any questions or anything they'd like to speak on this topic before we move any further. I don't know if there's an age limit on this. I took this to be every citizen in the city and surrounding areas myself. Maybe break it up into groups for kids and adults of some sort, but I'm sure it's, am I wrong in thinking that it's for everybody?
We don't establish or prescribe any particular age limit for the poet laureate. It could be someone, it could be a youth poet laureate, or it could be someone who's well-established in the community.
I think that would be great, in different age groups. Another item for the senior fund bunch, maybe. We've got some folks with a lot of information that they could expound on us through poetry, probably.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see Danny Fox lead a poetry slam.
All right, so back to this. We do have a motion on the table. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on to item number six, conduct recreation commission application interviews and make appointments.
A. So this is as read. We do have the opportunity here to conduct interviews for two, and I'll kind of walk through this. So it started with two expiring terms for November 2023. At the last council meeting, was it last December? The November council meeting, I believe, a term was terminated because of lack of attendance. So we have a third spot open. Since really the drafting of this staff report, we did have a rec- recreation commissioner resign. So there are technically four spots open right now. After the council terminated one of the terms, they did want to go back out for, you know, kind of an open call for applicants. So I think council has discretion now to fill the three spots that you've already are aware of and have had open calls for people, or the fourth position as well, the fourth term as well, due to the recent resignation. We do, we did receive five applications in the two calls for applications for the first round and one the second round. We have coordinated or communicated at least with all the applicants, and we hope they are all here tonight. So that is what is in front of you tonight. You each have a package of their applications as well as resumes, as well as a series of example questions or template questions that you can choose to use or not use at your discretion. And then, so really, the big thing here is, are we filling three seats or four seats? And we'll leave that to councils.
What is our feeling on that up here at the council level?
Get all that odds.
I'm thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I don't think they're all here, though. Can you tell us what the term length would be for each of those seats?
Yes, so the term that was terminated will have one additional year.
One term at one year?
One term at one year. The two that are naturally expiring, are those three-year terms? I think they're three-year terms. So two at three years, one at one year, and then the individual that resigned.
It's on and off here, then. It's probably at least one or two years, somewhere between one and two years is my guess.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that one. But I think we can look it up quickly.
We'll go with two or less, assuming? I don't recall the last appointment that we've done since I've been on.
I'll see if I can.
You're looking for the last term?
Or go Vegas term.
Okay, I'll go with that right now.
We will get that information?
I think we don't need a motion to appoint all four tonight. Do we? Do we need a motion to change anything? Or just moving down the appointment list and we're good with that process?
I don't, I don't think they need a special motion.
Yeah, I think just, as you suggest, it's fine.
So at this point, should we have, just call them up one at a time, or a quick synopsis, maybe a question or two or something like that? And then we can start the appointment process after that? For lack of a better order, I think just follow down the order that's in our packet here. I think it's probably easiest for us to look at as we go through. So first up would be Jennifer Davis. Are you here? Here, okay. Next, Mr. Danny Trejo.
Were they advised to come to this meeting today?
Email was sent up.
We called them?
In two different communications, I sent an email a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, I think, and then a recent email communication this week.
So plain devil's advocate. If we've only contacted them via email, how can we verify that the email didn't go to their spam folder and they weren't aware of the meeting? Is there any way that we can contact them and ask them to at least come online?
I would think they would know when the meeting is. And reach back out, most likely.
What I'm saying, though, is if the email that was sent went to their spam.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I guess what I'm saying is, say that hypothetically happened. If they're motivated enough to want to be here, they would know when this commission hearing was happening, right?
The problem is that this is the first time we've ever had a commission hearing like this, and it looks like at least two of these were done by hand, written. And I would doubt that they sent them in by email. I mean, staff can confirm that. But if you're not actually starting communication with the city through email, it wouldn't be assumed that email would be the number one form of communication back. So that would be my problem, is that they wouldn't necessarily know that email would be the form of communication here, whether or not to come to a meeting that is the first meeting we've ever had on this subject.
I think I understand what you're saying. I just, I guess what I'm, maybe I need more clarity, is when this, when they filled this out, did they know that this meeting was when they would be picked?
Jalen took a lead on this department.
And that answers my question.
Yeah, they did not specifically know, and.
They didn't know.
They did not know when the meeting was, in particular, when they applied. But we did, and through one, you know, form of contact, right? We did communicate with them to notify them of when the meeting was going to be held.
The president's here doesn't disqualify them from being appointed.
No.
It just doesn't give them opportunity to speak. That's all it does. We're not necessarily taking them out. It just doesn't give them opportunity to speak and answer any questions when they have, depending on how this goes. Sorry, Mr. Trejo.
Should we try to call them on the telephone and say, hey, you're missing a council meeting?
My personal opinion, you've signed up for it, we had a meeting on it two weeks ago, and we set it stage for this meeting. So if you're interested in the council's determining what we're doing with the process, and they tried it a couple of times, I don't know, I'm not worried about it.
Is there anyone else missing?
I have no idea. We have Mr. Trejo here, who's patiently waiting for us to ask some questions and have a moment to talk, so.
Sorry, Mr. Trejo.
Let's let Mr. Trejo, I'm just gonna ask you, why would you like to be on the commission? And we'll ask questions from there, and what you'd like us to know?
Hello, good evening, Mayor Bellinger and council members. Thank you for that opportunity here to interview with a position. So I guess I answered your first question, is, you know, why be here, why be part of the recreation program? You know, when I think about my situation, I have a seven-year-old, a nine-year-old that do the recreation. They do soccer, baseball, basketball, flag football, and they enjoy it very much. And also do coaching, too, for those, for the sports. And as I think as a parent and also as a volunteer coach, seeing both perspectives, you get to see that, you know, there's a lot of good things about the program. But like any program, nothing's perfect. There's always ways to enhance things, make improvements. And I think with being a coach and a parent, I get that opportunity to provide that kind of feedback to the staff, to see, you know, what are parents seeing, what are coaches seeing? And I think it gives you that opportunity to be part of the community and be able to provide that feedback and help make a difference on that.
Thank you. Questions up here for us, please?
Good evening, Mr. Trejo. So you're currently on the rec commission, correct?
Yes, correct.
And you're, how long have you been on the rec commission?
Since 2022, about a year and a half.
Are there avenues that you feel that we can really enhance the rec commission and take it up to the next level?
There is, and I think part of that goes with too, like who's part of the recreation commission to kind of help to spearhead that. Like I think about, you know, some opportunities that I've had to be there is when I ended up volunteering to coach soccer for the first time. It was a little intimidating. I've never watched a soccer game, never played soccer. But here we go, right? It's a situation where, you know, they need volunteer coaches, and you want your child to play, so you volunteer. And, you know, and even though maybe you don't know the sport, at least there's a rulebook, a regulation and codes. And so you kind of take with that. But when I started going through the original regulation and codes, there wasn't very comprehensive for maybe somebody who hasn't played soccer before or is familiar with the game. And so I kind of found myself in a situation where I kind of maybe didn't understand the game as well, and had some mistakes in terms of teaching kids the rules about soccer. But with being part of the recreation program, I had the opportunity to be in that perspective and say, what is this regulations missing that we can add to the rulebook? And so I took the opportunity to update the soccer rules for the city of Escalon, went through the document, talked to the coaches, went online, did some research, to get kind of a comprehensive program where if there would be a new parent to coach soccer, that they could actually go through the rulebook and be set up for success. So there's things with that where, as being part of the program, you can take that certain things to a new level. The other part, too, I think, that you can also do is, when you look at the sports you have, you have soccer that starts, soccer probably starts around middle of July, late July. And you go through all the sports, through soccer, flag football, basketball, then baseball. Baseball ends around May, so you almost have a full calendar year. But there's still, even though you have a full calendar year, there's still a lot of the sports and even arts that we can kind of incorporate into the program. When I think about, you know, golf, there's tennis, and then with arts, there's dancing, there's painting, there's musicals, arts. And when I think about, you know, what can we do with that with maybe a full calendar? There's also opportunities where we can actually have possibly clinics, you know, during that summer period, that June-July period where somebody wants to do a little bit more about golfing or tennis, or maybe take a couple of lessons in, you know, guitar, piano. There's certain things where there's a lot of opportunities there, especially with the community members here that can volunteer to or be paid to teach those type of things and have those clinics. You can start having a really robust program to be able to take the recreation program to a new level that'd be kind of comprehensive and very robust.
Just have one other thing, and I would like to publicly thank you because I know for a fact that you pour your heart and soul into these programs. I mean, every time I turn around, you and your boys are going to this practice or that practice, another practice, and soccer practice, flag football, basketball. So I just really want to thank you for your commitment to the rec programs.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for noticing that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sure. Before I ask you a question, Mr. Trejo, did we get clarification on the fourth term, the length?
There are two one-year terms and two three-year terms.
Okay. Well, that leads me to my question. Do you have a preference in term length for the ones that are offered between one and two years?
Yes, I would say the three years, especially with my, the thing about my kids that have, you know, being seven to nine years old, gonna be in the recreation program for a few more years, if not several more years. So I would like to continue to be in the recreation commission during that time period.
Thank you. There's no more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Sorry. Sorry about that, Danny. Mr. Trejo. I kind of stopped, I cut in there late. What are your thoughts on like competition and the idea of trophies, the stuff like that?
You know, that's a really good question. When you think, if you, I think, ask the parents and coaches, I think they'd be very divided in terms of what they want to see. I think you have maybe one half that really wants to be about, you know, building friendships, learning the sport, and really about, you know, really that kind of camaraderie and making friends. And where sometimes they're doing the sport, not so much because they want to be the next, you know, Patrick Mahomes for flag football, right? They're really there just to get the kids out of the house. And it's, and football or basketball just ends up being that, that tool that's happening. But then you also have the other half that are very competitive, right? I mean, they're really trying to maybe gear the kids to a new program, right? Where maybe they start, you know, baseball recreation, but then when they get nine, 10-year-olds, they go to TCT or some other type of travel sport. But it was challenging, I guess, to kind of answer that because you have that split. And I think some of it just kind of depends on, you know, if you do it correctly, to be competitive where it's still fun, and I think then we can do it that way. I think we have some of these lower age groups, you know, like the five, four, six, seven, eight, even the nine. I think the focus there really needs to be more about teaching the sport and really enjoying it. Because at the end of the day, what you're really looking for is them to come back next year and have these years in the program. And I think too, as we, maybe as you get into older age groups, you know, 10, 11, older, maybe it is more fun for the kids to be competitive. Because one of the things you do notice, even if you don't have a scoreboard out there, or do you talk about the score, show that you're keeping score, the kids are keeping score. If anybody's keeping score, they know what the score is and they're trying to win. So part of that does make it fun to have, you know, like whether it be playoffs or some type of standings. But I think that's more for the age groups. It's just that we want to just make sure, I think, for the younger groups that we're not put in a situation where we can potentially have a coach maybe bench a five-year-old, right? Because they're trying to win the standings. That's not really the goal of the program. But I think it is good, healthy, too, as the older kids get older, that they get more of that competitiveness and, because that does make it fun for them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Elsa Sandoval.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elsa Sandoval, out on Sanchez Way. You don't already know me. I'm applying for this position because of my background in youth programs. If you had opportunity to read my letter, you actually realize that my entire background in social services was as a crossover from at-risk youth programs in at-risk cities. My main job in these programs, like anybody else, I started in leadership programs. But my main ongoing career before I crossed over, although that was still part of my crossover, was in the development of programs. So we were brought into a variety of communities that had no program or their program had fallen apart, and we were asked to build the program, round up. Everything from your traditional sports leagues for kids, youth programs, to after-school programs, as well as your more high-impact programs. It was whatever the community needed. Whether we worked with PALS, which is the Stanislaus Police Activities League, whether we were bringing in BMX, skateboarding, community pools, aquatic programs, or the wilderness programs, just kind of across the board. I did that for 10 years before I officially and completely switched. I did that for 10 years before I officially completely switched over to social services. So during my social services years, youth programs remained part of that because again, as a community organizer, we tackle all issues. If you don't understand what a community organizer is in the social services arena, we are brought into communities, asked to identify the needs, identify the resources, and connect the community with the resources. So that's as much something in the recreation as it is in social services, whether it's senior services, family services, or youth programs. I don't know if you want to know specifics about some of the programs we led or I led, some of the programs I put together. Some of them would not meet Escalon needs as those were at-risk programs. Others would fall right into hopefully what I can see as Escalon having a rather well-developed, well-rounded program that reaches beyond just your traditional sports.
Questions up here for Ms. Sandoval?
I just ask you the same question, I guess. What's your view on competition and trophies in children's sports?
Dealing with youth for 16, I'll say 16 under the Scouts in particular, we had a philosophy, you never hold one back. There's always a way to recognize all while allowing those that really are going to go far beyond the opportunity to do so. You never clip a wing. You always raise the bar and you give them the tools to reach that bar. And part of that is recognizing those that excel. And there is a way to do both and without restricting one in favor of the other. I understand the whole participation trophy, that's fine. But there is a way to always recognize and never clip a child's wings.
Thank you.
I'll ask the same question. So how do you see the Rec Program, taking the Rec Program to the next level?
Well, in most communities, the Rec Program goes beyond just the children's sports. You're talking about bringing in everything from art programs, you're talking about bringing in, depends what the community wants ultimately. You're talking about bringing in competition bike programs, high-impact programs, wilderness programs. It's all out there. You can bring it all here. It just completely depends on what the community needs. It's difficult for me to come up here and tell you, gee, it's just this because I have worked so open-ended with each community that it comes down to what the community wants. Ultimately, you tell me what you want and I will build it for you. That's, that's the job. That's been the job for 30 years. Whether it's family services, youth services, senior services, whatever it's been, that is my specialization. You tell me what you want and I will build it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Sure. Hi, Elsa.
Hey.
Hi. Do you have a preference for the term lengths, the one-year or the three-year?
I could say sure, the three. I mean, it's ultimately left to you guys.
Do you have a preference towards the three-year?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just a quick question. Have you attended a Recreation Commission meeting as of yet?
Not as recently. When I was, when my kids were little. And my kids participated in program, keeping in mind my baby is 23 years old. And I, and they participate in several programs, especially the water and the scuba. They learned how to scuba dive and got their BSA scuba dive certification, starting out right here in the pools of Escalon. Their lifeguarding, their, their water rescue. All of that started here, although obviously we had to go somewhere else to expand on that because Escalon did not offer those. And those are programs that are out there and available, hopefully if we ever solve our pool issue. There is wonderful water opportunities. There's backcountry opportunities. That's also something my sons took advantage of. My sons were a beating example of those that expanded beyond what Escalon could provide.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'm here for Casey Silva. What brings you to want to be on our Recreation Commission?
Well, welcome. Hi, I'm here. I'm so excited to talk finally. It's been a while. I have a lot, I'm just really excited. I've actually moved here about a year and a half ago and I started coaching soccer. And both my boys dropped out, but I continued on coaching and I absolutely loved it. We then tried basketball and again, one played, one did not, but we continued on. And I coached and loved it, did T-ball with them, loved it. And one didn't play, one played sometimes, and sometimes he picked grass. I grew up playing sports. I was playing competitive soccer at six years old and absolutely loved it. This past season, I coached, they were big boys, they're 12-year-olds. So they were my big boys and I, I loved it. It was a lot of fun. But I was able to see as they get older that it can be challenging if they are there for being competitive or if they are there for not and they're mixed in with people are. So I, excuse me, with other players that are there to be competitive. So I was able to see a difference of a lower-level age of seeing older kids and some struggles they had as well as their parents. So that opened my eyes to the program and made me, it was perfect timing when I saw this. The other part of it, the reason I stated with my boys not really following through, they're not into sports like me. So there's really no other programs for them. So I would like to get my voice out there and try to, as other people have said, arts. There could be music. There's so many things. And I know within our community, within their preschool and schools they go to now, there's multiple businesses that we have that we could be partnering with, which in turn gives them support, as well as we can have, like they said, Danny said, clinics, whether that's with a certain dance studio in town if they're willing or perhaps there's a music teacher that wants to do lessons. And then that gives them some marketing, as well as opens up doors for kids because there's more than just sports. So there's those two things that really brought me here, as well as I went to school to be in social services or work in schools and it's not really for me. So this might be my way to give back and be a part of the community and something that I am passionate about.
Questions?
I would add this, ask the same questions then, or question, I should say. What's your feeling on competition and trophies in kid's sports?
Well, I appreciate that you guys give us little sheets to give out and I write like, I try to find something that identifies with each of my players and in the little gold, I don't know if you know what I'm speaking of, but there's a certificate that's given out. And I put like best defense player or most goals. And it's something to kind of personalize it, but I'll be honest, I feel that, sorry, I feel that there should be more of a divide or level of separation between who wants to be competitive. They should be able to go out and be competitive.
Get some audio, something's going on with our audio.
Sorry.
No, I am, it's not you.
That'd be my luck.
We'll work through it.
No worries. So I, I, one thing, and I don't understand fully, so I'm not, I don't want to speak and say it should be this way. It would be nice to understand it better and see if there's a way. Growing up, again, I was in a bigger town, but I was able to try rec soccer one year. And after that, I was like, I want to play competitive. Not all my friends did, but there should be more of a, some type of maybe an option with 82 teams.
I still can't hear anything.
We can hear you on board, though.
With 82 teams, it seems like it could have been divided. I'll tell you, I won two games and it was against a team who lost every game. And that's horrible for those kids, those people that volunteer. I learned after, well, I learned about a draft, like, I don't know how, anyhow, a draft for one league, that's, that kind of defeats the purpose. If you want to play with your same team and grow with that coach, we should maybe have levels that they can play across the board. So anyhow, there, there's just things that I saw. And then coming in and hearing that there's been some other openings, it's a huge opportunity for people that are excited and want to bring ideas and change. So I would really like to be a part of that.
Any other questions?
Oh, I went off on a tangent. The whole thing's.
You're good.
But I think that's one of the things I see. I think that there's an appropriate time for it, but there should be a way that people that, whether they're six, I have a six-year-old and he played with me two years in a row and he's amazing. And he gets down because he, you know, there just seems that maybe we could be, support people that want the trophy no matter what and support the kids that want to get out there and try to earn the trophy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll ask you my same question. I mean, you've only been here for a year and a half, but how do you see expanding the Rec Program as it is currently?
I think it has huge vast improvements. So I think again, identifying what you already have and maybe making it a little better in the areas that are so vast, like you're trying new things with basketball. So maybe in the next year, you have time to work on soccer, so start there. And then also again, looking out towards what else can we bring in, whether that's within volunteers or businesses, so we can connect and grow so that our kids have other things besides sports to look at in our Rec Program.
And have you been to a Recreation Meeting as of yet?
I have not.
All right. I'll ask the same question that I've asked the other two applicants so far. Do you have a preference, one way or the other, for one year, the three-year term?
I would prefer a three-year term. I have a five and six-year-old and I'm in it for the long haul to make things more fun.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, then thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Wesley Borba.
So we actually have him on the line. He's, he's the one that's trying to get in, so let me go ahead.
Exactly. What else can I do? It's like starting to listen a little bit closer.
Yeah, right?
Wesley, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Wesley? Maybe we could give him a call. That way, because I could see him on here and so I know he's here.
I can't hear anything if you guys are trying to talk to me.
Yeah, so he's.
Trying to get to you?
Right now, that way we can get him on there. Can you hear us?
How about now?
Nothing.
My attempt at sign language there.
Should I call instead?
We're gonna call you. Send him a message telling him that we're calling you. I can't do it from here for some reason.
I can't wait to watch this back out of contact.
Yes.
Yeah, I think she was waving. We're sending him a message.
There we go. Oh, he left, so hopefully.
Try one more time.
He was on his cell phone doing that. I might have blocked him out from receiving the phone call possibly.
I think we will, as while we're waiting for this, also call the first applicant who was not able to make it.
Like a fair idea.
I think he left.
I really felt bad a couple months ago. I thought I was the only one.
I don't think he's going to be able to zoom in. He can barely see our heads in this video.
He's, he read the text, so he might pull that now. I see that he read.
Yeah, let's go and pick him up. Three cops pulling up in front of his house. There you go. Peggy, I want to know how much Justin is paying.
You getting a free lunch every month? Is that what's going on? They just don't keep that?
Don't give him too big a head.
Betty might be in on it too. She's sitting over there quiet.
He's coming back.
Oh, here he's maybe trying to get.
Try again. He's currently muted. Unmute him.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I can't hear nothing.
We can hear you. You can't read lips from this far.
I can see you guys. I just can't hear anything. All right.
A phone number that needs to be called or will it go with the office number?
I will call the number that I was given. All right.
Okay. Strange.
We're not able to hold him.
Wrote me back, but he hasn't picked up.
We just need a body.
Hi, Wes. Hi, this is Dominique with the City of Escalon. I'm well, how are you doing?
I'm, I'm, I've got Verizon, so, you know, you know. I'm in a dead zone where I'm at, so.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's hard to get ahold of everybody.
I understand. So we could do this by phone if you're okay with that?
Yeah, I do. Go up. Fine with that. I try joining. I see you guys. I just, I just can't hear nothing.
Okay, no problem. So I've got you up to the mic and if you can hear, just go ahead and. Oh, there you go. There you go. And they'll go ahead and ask you questions and then just go ahead and answer it. I have you up to the mic, so we'll be able to hear you.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
I guess just to start off, what was your interest in joining the Rec Commission? Why did you want to join?
I just want to join because I have two younger kids and I love coaching. I enjoy it. My daughter is, she just turned 11 last Thursday. And I get joy just teaching young kids and young girls and young boys. And I just want to, I want to expand that. I want to help. Let's put it this way, help the kids enjoy something other than what they do now. Let's put it that way. You know, set up computers and video games, you know, everybody being outside, playing sports. I grew up playing sports, so I just want them to play sports. And I love teaching, teaching young kids. I, I'm not the greatest coach in the world. I do my best. But at the same time, I want to see them grow. I get to know everybody. I get to know everybody in the community. And I think that's, that's, that's a good thing for everybody. Everybody gets to know everybody. Everybody gets, gets a chance to meet everybody and they get to grow with each other.
Great. Thanks. Questions here?
I just asked the same question I asked the others. What are your thoughts on competition and trophies with kids?
Well, I think, I think Escalon should be a little bit more competitive. I mean, I know the softball league, they do, you know, they, because obviously we didn't have that many girls this year. And we ended up having to play Oakdale and Riverbank. Um, I think the soccer league, the softball league, um, even baseball for boys and stuff. I think, I think we should probably expand a little bit and try to, entangle, kinda like the Tri-City Outlaws, you know? Get, get some of the other cities involved and have a little bit more games, a little more competition. So we're not just playing Escalon. I think that'd be good for everybody. You know, that way we know how tough other cities are and then we can, we could build on that and, and be tougher at the same time.
Thank you.
Next question?
So Wesley, um, how would you expand or how do you see the rec program expanding for kids who aren't necessarily into sports?
Uh, I would say, I think there needs to be more advertisement with the schools. Obviously, I know the, the middle schools, the high schools, they have more, more involvement with that. But, uh, my daughter's in fifth grade, so I would say more, more advertisement with, with, with like Dead, uh, Van Allen and Farmington. Maybe even Collegeville, cause they're, they're in our same district. Just to get them more involved. Um, and there, there is travel leagues. There's other, there's other programs that are. So I would say more advertisement with the, with the elementary schools to get the kids more involved with sports. Um, because the parents don't always get, you know, involved too much. I guess that's another thing too, is getting the parents more involved with it. Just to get everybody, you know, more involved with it.
Okay, but.
I don't, I don't have to say it, but like, you kinda understand what I'm saying as far as like, uh.
My, my question was, what about those, what about those kids who don't play sports? How do you see the rec program expanding into other types of programs besides sports?
I, what, what kinda programs are we talking about here? Cause I, like, I, I'm sorry, I grew up with sports. I don't know what other programs there are anymore, you know, as far as, um.
Okay.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yep.
All right.
Theater or cheerleading. So, oh.
Yeah, yeah, we hear you.
Wesley, have you, um, have you attended a recreation commission meeting as of yet?
I can barely hear you.
Have you attended a rec meeting yet?
No.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Borba, there are two lengths of terms available. Two, uh, positions at one year and two at three years. Do you have a preference in a term length?
No. I can, I can, I can serve anytime. I have plenty of time.
Thank you. Any other questions? No other questions at this time, Mr. Borba. Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
All right. Well, I thank you guys for contacting me and, uh, making me part of this meeting.
Appreciate the call. Thanks.
Thank you, Wes. We'll follow up with you tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay.
And on the other applicant that was not here, Jennifer Davis. Do we have any contact? No response through a phone call. Okay. So at this point, we've, uh, interviewed everybody. So before we make an appointment, I do have one question. I know on the rec commission, we used to have a representative for, I don't know how many it was or the makeup of this, bear with me. A rural appointment for like Collegeville, Van Allen, Farmington kinda thing, outside of the city proper.
Yeah.
Do we still have that then?
Yeah.
And do we have any candidates that are applying that meet that need, if you will?
The way the code reads is all applicants must be registered to vote within the county. All must live within the school district boundaries. And up to two can be outside of the city limits. So there's no, there's no mandatory positions outside of the city limit. But up two can be outside of the city limit, but within the school district boundary. We do have one applicant, um, Danny Trejo, who is outside of the city limits, but within the school district. The rest are inside the city limits.
And the current commissioner that's remaining that is not up for consideration, is he also rural or local within town as the makeup goes?
He lives in Kevin Sanchez.
He's outside.
He's outside.
Kevin, Kevin is outside.
Okay.
So how does this, um, I mean, is this open for discussion?
We're open for discussion for appointments.
Discussion, nominations.
And then make nominations, yes.
We have any other questions?
Once you guys are done discussing, we can open nominations.
Personally would, uh, like to appoint or nominate Mr. Trejo. He's already been on the board and he does represent the rural districts. We do have a lot of kids coming from those outside, um, schools and, and live out in the country rural areas. I personally would like to appoint Mr. Trejo.
I will second that.
When I've, we got motion and second on that. Can, any discussion on that or just go to a vote? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Trejo, thank you for your service. You're, uh, on for a three-year term again. Thank you. So that was for a three-year. Sorry if I didn't make that clear and I know he wanted that.
That was his preferred.
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate Casey Silva for a three-year position.
Okay. Motion. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion or go to vote? So go ahead and go to vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
One aye.
All right, four to one. Uh, Ms. Silva is now on the board for three years. Yep. Congrats. All right, for, thanks for a couple of one-year terms then is what we're up, correct? Next two are one years. Okay. So is there any other nominations here?
I'd like to nominate Elsa Sandoval. I think, uh, she's obviously gonna bring a lot to the board.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or directly to vote? Looks like we're going to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Elsa Sandoval. One year. Thank you. And one, one-year term left.
Sure.
Who are we looking to do on the next one?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Davis.
All right, we have a motion for Jennifer Davis for the last remaining spot for one year. Discussion or a second to that?
I have a hard time with that, being that she's not here, not answering. That's just my opinion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, looks like she's there, Ms. Jennifer Davis, for a one-year term then. Thank you for everybody for being here. Thank you. Appreciate that. Moving on to item seven. Discuss and provide direction on agenda item request from Mr. Fox. Who's got this one for us?
Hi, Dina. Thank you. Um, so this item actually came before the council on an October 2nd meeting. Um, and then we were having trouble, um, with Mr. Fox being able, or no, actually, yeah, you were having trouble at home and so he wasn't able to log into the meeting. Um, so we did reschedule it for today's meeting, November 20th, and we put it back before the council. Um, this item specifically, um, requests that Brentwood Park, um, have its name changed, uh, to Bob and Deena Lees, uh, Park. And then Danny Fox is in the audience if you have any questions and I'm sure he'll give you some background, um, and information on this item as well.
Mr. Fox, I'd love you to, uh, further expand on the knowledge I know you have on this nomination and idea here.
Yeah, it's, uh, been a long time coming. Uh, it was my attention about, uh, two or three years ago from, uh, one of the relatives. And, um, started in the process, COVID, everything else kinda, uh, took a back burner. Yeah, the, the reason I'm asking the council to consider the name change in this park is that we have Sanchez Park. It's Sanchez and Cardinal. That's in, uh, recognition to the Sanchez family that developed that subdivision. The Lattice Children Park in Oklahoma and California comes from the Latta family. That's Lattice Children Park. They donated that back in the day when you weren't required to put a park in when you did a subdivision development. Hogans in this, uh, park, Sports Complex. Again, we know that, uh, the Hogans have done a lot, uh, early on with the community and as well as Dave Innes. Reed Manor Park at, uh, Brook and Autumn. That's named after the Reed family that had that walnut orchard there that was on Vine and, and that's where the, at Autumn and Brook, that's the, that's where Reed Manor Park is. Uh, Swanson Park is at Swanson and Sophie. The street's named after Swanson. And that come from this Clark Swanson family down on Vine, who was an almond grower and a long-time, uh, area, uh, Escalon resident. The reason for Bob and Deena Lees is that when I first came into town in 1978, 79, it took, it didn't take me long to learn if you spoke of Bob, it had to go with Deena. So Bob and Deena kinda go together, other than just Bob Lees. Uh, Bob Lees, he was born, raised, uh, here in Escalon. Deena came to Escalon when she was younger from Texas. Uh, Bob, uh, served in World War II. And then after he got out of the service, he was, they were married and they eventually had, uh, two sons. And, uh, now they have three grandchildren. So Bob, in 1970, uh, purchased Emo's Liquor Store and Sparty Goods Shop from Emo Cabral. That, that's the building that has Grassy, Calizos, Rappetys, Big Dipper, now I think the Pumpkin Patch. So that was the original Emo's that Bob and Deena bought in, uh, 1970. In 1974, he moved over to the current location now at, uh, Main and Highway 120. In 1975, he bought a liquor store in, in Manteca. And his son ran Emo's Liquor as we know it today. Another son had a meat market, bought it from Vern and that's down on Main Street and he was there for, for several years. In 1976, uh, Bob built Emo's Motel. In 1977, he built Emo's Storage. And in 1980, he purchased 48 acres of the house at the end of Yosemite Avenue and Elizabeth. There used to be a barrier there. All that was almonds from that location all the way to Campbell. They developed that 48 acres. Became Brentwood Estates. Three seat streets in that subdivision are Bob and Deena Lees's grandchildren. Thaddeus, Nathaniel, and Justin. Bob was a volunteer firefighter for 40 years. He was a very prominent member of the Escalon Sportsman's Club, the Lions Club, Chamber of Converse, uh, for 33 years. The Board of Directors at Burwood Cemetery. He was also the leader of the Boy Scouts at one time. DENT PTA, both Bob and Deena were members of, of the, uh, DENT PTA. In 1981, the Business Persons of the Year went to, uh, Bob and Deena Lees. In 1981, they were the Grand Marshal at Park Feet. In 1995, they were, um, selected as Citizens of the Year. I think if you, um, talk to some old timers that go down to the Es- Escalon Historical Society, if you mention Bob Lees, you're probably gonna have them mention, oh yes, and Deena. So Bob and Deena Lees, from their childhood and their marriage and their children, devoted a lot to the city of Escalon. I think it would be nice to change Brentwood Park into Bob, Deena Lees Park. That's my request. I understand that, uh, there could be a minimal, uh, cost to the city budget. If you take a look at the Sanchez Park, it's a brick, brick structure with a, a gold plaque. Uh, Lattice Children Park is made out of redwood boards. And, uh, the other parks are usually as Justin was, uh, confirmed that, about an 18 by 22, uh, aluminum sign, whatever the park's name is. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have. But I, I truly believe that, and I'd like that the city council to consider Brentwood Park name change to, uh, Bob and Deena Lees Park.
Thank you. I know that they have, uh, done a tremendous amount for our community over the years, obviously back in the seventies and eighties. It's not uncommon to see their name on back of sports jerseys and donating to various causes, sports booths, when they needed stuff for snack shacks, for their fundraising and whatnot. I have no issue whatsoever with this consideration. I'm on board with it myself.
Unless anyone has.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Fox.
Please.
Are, uh, Bob and Deena still alive?
No.
If the council so chooses, um, to rename the park, um, would you be willing to contact some family members to have a formal dedication?
Yes. If it's approved, that's, uh, that's a part of the plan. I think it has to be approved before, uh, we can decide and how they may wanna decide on if they wanna put the standard aluminum sign inside the park there somewhere. Or they wanna take a look at something else that it's, uh, approved by the city. Whether it be a brick structure that they would finance or some other type of, uh, plaque or sign indicate it's Bob and Deena Lees. I know it's kinda Bob and Deena Lees, but I've explained to you why, to me personally, Lees Park doesn't sound just sounding Bob and Deena Lees. But yes, those are all things that we can work on after this, uh, after this, if it's approved.
So my only other question is you've mentioned Latta, you mentioned Sanchez. But you didn't mention the park in your neighborhood, Dinosaur, and I just wanna make sure that that wasn't named after you.
Easy.
Well, I had it on my list, but I wouldn't have named it. Well, there's Narcissus Park too.
Well, on, on a serious note, I, I never had the opportunity to meet the Lees's. But it sounds like they were true community members and true Escalonians. And so I really appreciate that you bringing this forward to council.
Well, and I, I think that if Councilman, uh, Engel and, and some of the old timers in the Lions Club, if he, if he just asked about who's Bob and Deena Lees, well, they're probably gonna, uh, a good report. That they're just, they were just good people. They were, they were good for the community and I think it's, uh, been a long time coming. Thank you.
Your friend, sure, uh, Dominique, um, is there any specific, uh, protocols we have on name changing or is there any roadblocks to the process that we can do this? Or we can just decide we wanna do it and we're allowed to do this?
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding.
I just wanna make sure there's no, if there's with the Brentwood name, if there's anything that we're.
Anything else we need to do?
I'm on board with the change.
Only thing I can think of is if there's anything in our, uh, planning code that may require this to go before planning commission.
Not that, not that I've seen. We have sort of no policy on it.
That makes us nice for us to make a decision on what we'd like to do. Um.
So because they're, um, passed away, do you wanna do Bob and Deena Lees Memorial Park? Is that better or just park?
That sounds good to me.
I like the sounds of that. I mean, obviously we'd like some family input on that, but I do like that ring. I do like that ring. That sounds really nice. Um, before we move to any action up here, is there anybody in the room here that would like to also speak on this topic? Um, or against this idea?
Mr. Mayor, do you have one question?
Please.
That was prompted by the discussion here. With that, is that, with renaming it, is that something that we need to obtain the family's permission to be able to do? Would we be stepping on toes if we didn't obtain that?
We could reach out to them if you like and you could affirm that they're okay with it and then bring it back. Yeah.
I'm assuming they wouldn't be, but we should probably check with them, make sure.
The other thing is rather than bring it back, you could just, if the council so inclined, give you the direction subject to their approval.
That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah.
Out to the family. Yeah, we could do that.
Frank, I just want to make sure that there isn't, this is within locks of my residence. I just want to make sure legally that I can vote on it and there's not an apparent conflict of interest, or should I abstain?
Only if the family's paying you off for this.
Since you have no knowledge of them and haven't met them, I think we're solid on that.
No, I mean, there's no, a renaming of the park doesn't affect your current, your real property interests.
I'd like to make a motion, if you can.
Please.
To adopt the idea, uh, call it, uh, Bob and Dina Lees Memorial Park pending objection from the family.
I would second that motion myself.
I'll third it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resounding five oh. Thank you. Mr. Fox, thank you for bringing that up for us. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. On this ticket, there's, uh, one son, a daughter-in-law.
Awesome.
Well, the son doesn't, but there are family members in town, like two grandchildren. I can get in touch with the person.
Yeah, get them in touch and have them talk to, yeah.
Sounds great.
We'll start the ball rolling on what the next steps are.
Yes, yes.
For sure.
Thank you very much.
No.
Thank you.
We know they've done a lot for our community and we appreciate that and it was great. Great. Um, next up, council communication, communications and future agenda items. Um, Mr. Strumman, what do you have for us tonight?
Two very quick items. Um, sorry that I, actually three, sorry. Uh, sorry that I missed the Veterans Day Parade. Uh, we decided to take an early Thanksgiving holiday to visit, uh, in-laws out of town, but, uh, thank you for all of you that supported the Veterans Day Parade and the subsequent barbecue with the Legion. Um, secondly, um, this Thursday obviously is Thanksgiving and if we put all of our political discord aside, I think we all have something very, to be very thankful for. We're thankful for our freedoms. We're thankful for the community of Escalon, um, thankful for our residents. And so just really invite all of our residents and city council and city staff to really think about everything that we can be thankful for. I mean, it's easy to go negative, but stop and think about what's going on around the world and we're so blessed. So, um, happy Thanksgiving to all of our residents, staff. Um, only other thing on a serious note, uh, congratulations to all the rec commission, new rec commissioners. Look forward to, uh, really considering expanding the rec program, uh, for those families that aren't really into sports. Um, and sky's the limit. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Walker.
Sure. Um, so today has been a very recreation-heavy meeting. Um, so first, just, uh, no, or a question really, um, I know that Sanchez, not Sanchez, Hogan Park is going to be, um, going through some recovery in the wintertime. Um, is there any possibility to get some dirt on those fields? I know the last time we got some dirt was in 2020, um, so that's been about four years. Is that on a cycle or is there any chance that?
That will be part of the process. We'll be getting it reworked. Everything behind the snack bar on the ground will hopefully be reworked and redone. So that ball fields will have infill, new infill dirt on them, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Um, and then, let's see, thank you to all the recreation commissioners, the, uh, new recreation commissioners that come out. I served on the recreation commission myself for a long time. There were many times where there was a seat open for several months at a time because we didn't have enough applicants. So, um, I'm thankful, grateful that there are so many people and so many people that are so interested in being involved in Escalon. Um, thank you, Danny. This'll, you will be the veteran. You are the, the one that is on one more term. Um, and you've been such an asset to the commission so far. So thank you for that. Um, and then from what I've heard from all of our new commissioners is, uh, new programs, just making sure everybody is getting involved. We always need more hands on deck. Um, we have always been, well, we have been for as long as I know, uh, we seek out recreation contract instructors and I know that that has been posted on our Facebook page and we've been sharing that too. So if anybody out there knows anybody that wants to bring any, uh, new programs, we do have a program through the city where we contract instructors to work through the city and are able to contract that and use our facilities and those kind of things. So, um, please be on a lookout and like I said, more hands on deck, the better. And, uh, and besides that, thank you, everybody. I'm so thankful to be here and wrapping up this year and a month from now. So thank you for coming out today.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilman Engel.
Um, happy Thanksgiving. Please don't drink and drive. That's it.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving coming up as well. Um, the Veterans Parade was a pretty good one. A lot of people showed up. It was nice to see. Um, the kids really enjoyed the candy, uh, which I figured they would. Um, as far as the new commissioners, I'm glad you're on board. It sounds like you, you all have a mindset to kind of push our kids to, regardless of what their interests are, to, uh, be the best they can be. I think that's the mentality we need to have. So, um, I wanted to see also if I can get consensus from the board to get the, um, the, the city looking and working with the district, uh, the school district to see if we can't use or work out some sort of deal to use their fields as auxiliary fields at times. Um, and potentially look into the idea of, excuse me, convert, converting a couple of fields, uh, parks we have, uh, a couple of areas into potentially areas where we could have extra practice zones, uh, potentially games, things like that.
I will definitely support that.
I think that's a good idea to bring up those things with, uh, on our next, uh, meeting we have with the school district. See if they're interested in what the roadblocks are to us being able to get back on those fields. Cause I know when I was a child, I got to play on the school fields for rec programs, so.
Especially with Hogan Park being closed.
I'll just answer the first part. We have actually explored, um, the use of their fields. They will consider long-term leases for sport seasons. Um, there will likely be a, a cost, but it is something, um, that we have explored and, and they would be willing to, um, consider.
Well, and it sounds like, you know, a good example would be at the middle school. There's a couple of courts back there that if they're rehabbed would be extremely accessible, easy for people to use. Um, the, the other thing that was brought up to me by a consti- a couple constituents, um, independent of each other, were the idea of Oklahoma Street Park. I had brought it to the city manager's attention, but needed to get consensus on it. The idea, they wanted to, um, paint a pickleball court on that court and, um, they said they would even do it themselves, but I figured I'd bring it to the council.
I can say from personal knowledge, I have my parents who live down the road from there and on the weekends, I'm not sure if it's Saturday or Sunday, but they are out there regularly on the weekends. And they've got lawn chairs. It's like going to a kid's soccer game. They've got lawn chairs and they're out there for hours from what I can tell. Um, so there's definitely some interest there and I would be on board with exploring the ability to do that because it's not that much money in any way, shape, or form to paint some lines and we're getting good use out of that park. They're not playing basketball, playing some pickleball. I think it's great.
The only question I have, would have is I just need to take a measurement because I don't know the measurement of a pickleball court to see if we have it there on the concrete. Um, I think we can make that happen.
Okay, we got somebody who's saying it might fit, so.
Yeah, we could even do, um, two different line. We could do one color for basketball and one other color line for pickleball. So then when we're out there, we can still utilize the, the court for both ways.
So to the three new rec commissioners, pickleball league.
We are looking to expand adult recreation. Adult, another adult recreation programs are great.
And this would be something that you, that your group would do, Justin?
Yeah, we will take care of that.
We'll take care of that.
Other than that, uh, have a good night and thank you, uh, for being patient tonight.
All right, I'll try and make it quick. I'm going to echo everybody's thoughts on Thanksgiving. We all have a lot to be thankful for and, uh, always look for the positives. So enjoy your weekend, your holiday with your family and your friends. I agree. Be safe. Don't drink and drive. Be responsible. Um, Veterans Day Parade was great. The barbecue was great. Thank you to everybody who supports that. That was incredible to see the support they had at the ceremony as well and the barbecue as well. Um, congrats to the rec commissioners that are appointed tonight. You have lots of interesting ideas I'm hearing. Looking forward to seeing what you guys can put together out there for the community. Um, Christmas on Main, looking forward to that. Get everybody out there. Hopefully the weather holds for us and we're able to have a good time out there. And lastly, congrats to the high school football program. They won another playoff game this last Friday. Coming up again for Friday, they got a playoff game at St. Mary's. Um, they're doing great. Congrats to the team. Congrats to the coaching staff, the parents and the community that support that program. It's great to see that as usual. And, um, that's all I've got with that tonight. Thank you very much. We're going to enjoy the meeting and go into closed session. Thanks so much.
Go Cougars.